Uh, member Kate's member honker member Garcia. Um, do we have member Bitzer? Do we have Vice Chair?
Not yet.
Okay. Do you want me to text? Let me text her real quick and see if she's gonna come on here. Oh, okay. Uh, she just texted. She's, uh, running a few minutes late. So why don't we just get started on some of the, um, preliminaries? Since I do know she'll be, um, coming, I think. Hold on one second. At least maybe we can, uh, go through some of the preliminaries since we do have, uh, guests and I know this is a special meeting and I just wanna thank everybody. Thank you, um, Ms. Solaria and Pam and everybody for jumping on board along with our board members uh, for our special meeting here this afternoon. And, uh, of course, all the guests, um, that I see online as well, welcome. So with that, um, I know, uh, Vice Chair Trujillo Davis will be coming online, but why don't we just at least get started? Um, uh, Ms. Jones, would you mind doing a roll call vote for us?
Certainly. Good afternoon, everyone. Member Bitzer, are you present?
I am indeed.
Member Kate's?
Yes.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member honker?
Yes, I'm here.
Howdy. I'm gonna call Vice Chair Trujillo Davis for the record, although we know she's coming on late. And Chair Sweeney?
Yes, I'm here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Appreciate that. And next on our agenda, item is approval of today's agenda. Um, just wanna check in, uh, with Ms. Jones and Ms. Solaria and others if there's any changes to the agenda or it looks good. All right. If there's no changes, yes, member honker.
Uh, hearing no changes, I move that we approve the agenda.
Second that.
Thank you, member honker for your motion and member Bitzer for your second. Ms. Jones, would you please do a roll call vote for, um, member honkers motion?
Yes, member Bitzer, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Member Kate's?
Yes.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member honker?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chair Trujillo Davis, I just let her in, but she probably hasn't caught up with us yet. Chair Sweeney, your votes? Okay, the motion to approve the agenda passes.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, and, uh, welcome Vice Chair Trujillo Davis. I'm glad you were able to make it.
Thank you.
All right, all right. So we just, uh, just to bring you up to speed, we just approved, uh, today's agenda. And so we are now on agenda item number three, and that's EIB twenty-two dash thirty-four in the matter of the petition for hearing on air quality permit number ninety-two ninety-five Roper Construction, Inc., Alto Concrete Batch Plant. And I see we have Mr. Rose, which is the counsel for the applicant um, on the line. And good, good afternoon, Mr. Rose. How you doing?
Uh, so far, so good. We'll see when I get, when we get done with this.
Okay. Well, the floor is yours, Mr. Rose. Appreciate you coming to our board meeting.
No problem. And, and, you know, perhaps your counsel wanna wade in here, but we filed a petition. Uh, this involves a denial of an air permit by the department. Uh, we filed a petition with the board for a hearing on that denial. And under, under the statute and your rules, you're required to hold a hearing within sixty days. The petition was filed last Friday, which was, so it didn't get on your last Friday's, uh, agenda. And so in order to set a hearing date within the statutory timeframe and your rules also require at least thirty days' public notice of the hearing. So it didn't appear as though we could wait till the board's next meeting to try to resolve some of, some of this. And so, um, I think it's before you, whether you want to appoint a hearing officer. Um, and then whether you wanna schedule the hearing, allow the hearing officer to, to work with the parties to do it. Um, I think we're open, but I think we'd be looking probably at a hearing now. I would guess sometime maybe mid to late September, within that sixty-day requirement in order to meet the thirty-day notice. Cause I assume there's going to be a lag uh, between deciding this and actually getting it in the papers and meeting the, the thirty-day requirement. So that's what we'd be looking for. We have, I have some questions about the scope of the hearing. I don't think I've been in a hearing where the boards reviewed a denial before. So usually there the challenges are individual permit terms. So this is, this is a first for me and I'm not sure the scope of the hearing. And it's something I think that a hearing officer could resolve in terms of. I know it's imparted de novo proceeding, but exactly what's de novo since the record before the department has filed with you? What additional evidence we need to add, adduce and exactly um, how that's gonna be handled? The same thing's true, I think, with, with public testimony and the scope of public testimony. So it's the kind of thing that, that you could deal with as a board, or you could have, you know, have the hearing officer with the, uh, input from the parties try to resolve. But I expect that's going to be an issue uh, even before we get to the hearing itself. So wanted to raise it sooner than later.
Thank you so much, Mr. Rose, and appreciate that introduction and that presentation. And, um, just making sure you, you're finished before I look to Ms. Solaria.
Um, that's all I've got. I'm available for questions from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Before we go to questions for the board, uh, Ms. Solaria, did you wanna chime in or add anything to what Mr. Rose said?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just, I, I echo what, uh, Mr. Rose has presented about the time constraints the board is under specifically. I believe that sixty days would run on September twentieth. Um, so that's kind of the window we're looking at to schedule this. Um, and then, of course, for the board's discussion would be who you would want to appoint as hearing officer, whether that be a board member or a contract hearing officer. Um, I will just say for the sake of information, if, if the board opts to use a hearing off, a contract hearing officer, um, they can designate you, Madam Chair, or the Vice Chair, whomever, to go ahead and make that appointment as we've done in the past. Um, just so we can see who is actually available on the selected date, who wants to take this on. Um, so that's really all I have to, to add to what Mr. Rose stated. Um, I'm not sure if there is counsel on from the homeowners association, if we wanted to give them an opportunity, um, and the department, of course, to weigh in on, uh, um, with regard to scheduling, if there's any other matter that the board should consider at this time.
Absolutely. I see two people, uh, uh, joining. I, I see Ms. Sa- Sakura and, um, Ms. Katz. Uh, uh, Ms. Sakura, you, are you for the homeowners?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. Uh, Julie Sakura and Tom Nasco for the Ranches of Centerra and the, um, Alto Coalition.
Thank you so much for joining us. Uh, do you have anything to share with us or to add, um, I, uh, on this matter?
Uh, no, we concur with, um, Mr. Rose's thoughts, um, in terms of the, the timing and the scheduling, and we're amenable to any schedule that a hearing officer and/or the board, um, would, would set.
Thank you so much. And I see, um, legal counsel, uh, Ms. Ms. Katz. Thank you for joining us.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Flora Katz, on behalf of the New Mexico Environment Department. Um, Mr. V Hill is the lead counsel in this case. Um, I will be filing an entry of appearance to support him. And he is out of town today, so I'm covering this meeting for him. So he, but, but he will be, um, the lead attorney in this case. Um, and I concur, uh, with Mr. Rose and Ms. Sakura. And the department will certainly work, uh, with either the board or a hearing officer to, um, get the, uh, hearing on this matter scheduled.
Thank you so much, Ms. Katz. Appreciate that. So, um, members of the board, I'm just looking to, yes, member honker.
Yes, I, I had a couple of questions looking through the material that we got for this, uh, discussion today. Um, I assume NMED drafted a permit, uh, with, uh, with the normal things you find in a permit. That's what went out to public notice. Uh, and the da- denial was based on hearing uh, officers', uh, recommendation. But there, there was a, a draft permit of some sort that we could go back to, uh, in, in a hearing context. I see Ms. Katz nodding, so I assume that's yes.
Yes, member honker. Um, the, that permit is in the record. That will be before you. Um, and the department would certainly, would be uh, presenting that permit and its case, the, in the, the same case that it presented below.
Okay. One, one other question. Uh, normally I would assume that the material we would consider would be limited what, to what was considered in the prior hearing. But I noted that some of the, uh, some of the complaints and, and al- allegations from the applicant were that they were not allowed to submit various things or testimony on, on various items. So I, I guess this is, I guess, a, a, a question for our counsel, uh, Ms. Solaria, um. What, what, what would be the boundaries in terms of, of what this hearing would consider versus the original one?
Thank you, member honker. Um, so th- th- those would be some legal question considerations for the hearing officer to take up upon appointment. Um, as reference, this is a de novo hearing. It's a, the posture of the case is a little different from what we've seen in the past. And so there are lots of questions that I myself will have to delve into as well, um, in terms of what the substance of this hearing will be. Um, but as, in terms of what evidence would come in on this hearing, those, those would be the types of rulings that the hearing officer, um, would take up.
Okay, thanks. That's, those are my questions.
Thank you, member honker and Ms. Solaria for, for that discussion. I see member Garcia, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And, uh, considering, uh, as, uh, Mr. Rose stated, there's gonna be some questions regarding the scope, uh, legal questions regarding the scope of this hearing, and it sounds like it could be a bit more complicated than, um, what we might be able to handle if one of us were the hearing officer. So it might be a good idea to appoint, uh, a professional hearing officer for this one, uh, is what I would recommend. Thank you.
Thank you, member Garcia, for that comment. Um, is there any other comments or discussions or questions, uh, from the other? Yes, Ms. Solaria.
I just wanted to, um, ask the parties how many days that this, they anticipate this hearing taking place.
Yeah, Madam, uh, Madam Chair, um, I had the same thought. And, and I think it depends on the scope of the hearing. If we're adding evidence in addition to what's current, was currently before the department and that we're not repeating everything that's already gone before, I would guess a day or two. If on, on the other hand, we're basically dealing with a totally de novo proceeding, um, probably two, maybe three days. But that also depends on whether we have prefiled written direct and rebuttal testimony as opposed to um, having direct testimony in detail at the hearing. So those are things. But I would guess probably two days would be sufficient based on past experience. But again, that's, you might wanna give some flexibility to the hearing officer if it, if you set aside three and it only takes one, that would be great. But, um, I don't think it'll be more than two days.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. And, um, other, other councils, do you have any other, um, insights or additional comments regarding the number of days?
We, we would concur with Mr. Rose that if you set aside three days and it only takes one, that would be fantastic. And this, the, how, however long it does take will be dependent on some of the decisions that the hearing officer is gonna make regarding these initial questions on scope.
Thank you, Ms. Sakura.
And I, I just would say that I, I agree as well. And I, I wouldn't have anything else to add to what Mr. Rose and Ms. Sakura have, have said there.
Thank you, Ms. Katz. All right. And any other members or Ms. Solaria, do you have any other follow-up?
Um, just looking at the counter, um, and I would maybe have the parties, if we're gonna float some dates, um, the week of the nineteenth, if we could stretch that sixty days to sixty-one. The EIB meeting is scheduled on the twenty-third. So if we wanted to do three days, we could do the twenty-first to the twenty-third, which worked out for me, cause I have another hearing on the twentieth. Um, that's just a proposal I was coming up with.
Yes, Vice Chair Trujillo Davis.
Um, it, I agree, uh, I like Ms. Solaria's, uh, suggestion, um, just because if we can combine, uh, a possible uh, EIB, regular scheduled EIB meeting with, with the hearing, that is usually very helpful to board members, so.
Thank you, Vice Chair Trujillo Davis. Um, is there any other thoughts from our members looking at your schedules and calendars? Does that look? And, and so also, uh, to our, um, our parties, uh, as Ms. Solario mentioned, um, we might have to extend one day. Is that okay with everybody?
Speaking for the applicant who's, I think is entitled to a hearing within sixty days, you had additional pages five.
Thank you, Mr. Rose.
We have no objection tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Sakura. And Ms. Katz?
Um, I, the department seems like it might have some availability issues, but we'll, we'll have to make it work. Uh, we'll, we'll figure things out, um, in order to have the hearing done in the timeframes that are required.
Thank you, Ms. Katz. Appreciate that. So it looks like, uh, we're like, we're targeting a, a date there. Um, and I think we're leaning, sounds like consensus toward, uh, we'll, we'll definitely make a motion on this, but toward a hearing officer, um, appointment for this. Um, is there any other detail that you wanna discuss, board members? Yes, Ms. Solaria.
I would just, again, throw out, um, the board considering the format of the hearing, given our current world state. Um, whether or not, I think, I think an option would be to schedule it as a hybrid hearing, but put in the notice that it may, um, be fully online. I think that that's, unless counsel has, other counsel has an objection to that, I think that's probably the most prudent course of action. Um, and that way we could notice it with flexibility, um, if, if that's, uh, amenable to the board.
Thank you, Ms. Solaria. Um, yes, member honker?
Yeah, just a, a note. I'm gonna be out of town all of, all of those days. I think I should be able to tune in for most of the time. Uh, maybe not a hundred percent of the time, but, uh, um, I, I can do a remote connection, uh, for, for most of the period.
Thank you, member honker. Um, member, member Katz, did you wanna? Uh, did you have your hand up? Sorry if I missed that.
So, uh, did we say what date yet? Are we, did I miss this?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes, sorry. Um, yes, uh, Ms. Solaria, uh, can you just repeat those dates again?
Sure, Madam Chair. The prospective dates are September twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, which is a Wednesday through Friday.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah, sounds good.
And I, and I, and I'll just remind the board that in the, in the instance of us, of us appointing a hearing officer, that your participation in the hearing is certainly encouraged. And I know this board is great about actually attending the hearings, but um, with the appointment of hearing officer, a report will be, um, prepared, and then you'll have an opportunity to review that report and the transcript as well. So we don't necessarily have to have a quorum for those hearing dates to go forward, but of course, you are welcome and encouraged to attend.
Thank you, Ms. Solaria, for that clarification. And, yes, member Garcia.
If we're ready, I'll go ahead and put forth a motion to, um, set the hearing for EIB twenty-two dash thirty-four. Uh, hearing on air quality permit ninety-two ninety-five Roper Construction, Inc. Uh, of hearing date of September twenty-first through the twenty-third, if necessary. And, uh, that the hearing would be held, uh, possibly as a hybrid hearing, but at a minimum as a WebEx hearing, and, uh, that the chair will appoint a hearing officer for the hearing.
Second that.
Thank you, member Garcia, and thank you, member Bitzer, for your second. Ms. Solaria, is that, um, did we cover everything?
That was an expertly proposed motion.
Wonderful. Um, with that, there's no further discussion. Ms. Jones, would you mind doing a roll call vote on member Garcia's motion?
Member Bitzer, how do you vote? Member Bitzer, how do you vote on, on member Garcia's motion?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Member Kate's?
Yes.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member honker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo Davis?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Appreciate that roll call vote. And I just wanna once again thank our guests. Um, Ms. Sakura and, uh, Mr. Rose and Ms. Katz, uh, for, uh, attending today. And hope you guys have a wonderful weekend.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. You as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, um, I think we're on the next agenda item, agenda item number four, and that's EIB twenty-two dash twelve, twenty-two dash fifteen, twenty-two dash eighteen, twenty-two dash nineteen, twenty-two two dash twenty in the matter of hearing requests for permit number GCP three relocation RE zero-one eighty-nine twenty-five. And this is for discussion about the reschedule hearing and appointment of replacement hearing officer. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Solaria.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just to refresh everyone, at our last meeting, um, it was determined that the board would appoint a new hearing officer for this matter. Um, since then, the previously appointed hearing officer did file a notice of recusal. Um, the parties additionally filed a, um, joint concurrence to continue the date of this hearing, um, considering what's transpired. And, and I believe, and, and the, um, community representative can address this, I believe there is still effort afoot to possibly obtain counsel on their behalf. Um, so right now, it, it seems that all parties are on board with going ahead and pushing the date out. So we would just select a new date today, um, and then appoint a hearing officer. Pam and I reached out to Felicia Orth, whom you all are very familiar with, um, and she gave us some available dates and, um, offered to be available for this hearing. Um, she did suggest that she could actually get up to speed by the original date, but since the parties have already made that filing that they're amenable to continue it, I think we should just proceed on that, um, and pick a, pick a new date. So that's all I have. And if the department and the committee, uh, members and the permitee, um, representatives have anything to add, I would defer to them.
Thank you, Ms. Solaria. And so I, I see, um, we have some of the parties attending. Thank you so much for attending today. Um, and so I wanna, uh, make sure we provide some time for, for you to, um, share with us any thoughts or concerns or concurrence. And I'll just go down my, uh, screen here. So Mr. Romero. Yes, yes.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, let me just suggest this. Uh, we, of course, um, understand the circumstances on, under which the, uh, uh, under which the, this rescheduling is, is occurring. Um, the permitee per which properties very much wants to get this matter resolved, uh, as, and, and sooner than, sooner than later. Uh, so that it can, uh, begin to operate under its existing permit, uh, if that, if that's what eventually occurs. But we'd certainly like to get this matter resolved uh, as soon as possible. I, of course, uh, and as I'm sure everybody has, uh, I, I do have some, some conflicting dates in the latter part of August. Um, but I'd like to, you know, find out what dates, uh, are available or are being considered. That find a, you know, a healthy, a healthy medium between, uh, the interests of all parties in trying to get this thing better, getting, get this matter heard as soon as possible, um, while also accommodating the needs for appointing and, uh, appointing the new hearing officer, Ms. Orth, or whoever that may be.
Thank you, Mr. Romero. Appreciate your input. And I'm gonna go here and, um, I see Kim. Yes, the floor is yours.
Very good. Thank you. Yes. So, um, the petitioners, uh, submitted an entry of appearance for myself to represent the, all of the petitioners in this matter. So, um, I do speak for them, although I believe, um, of one or more are on the call right now. Um, in terms of timing, uh, our, uh, greatest interest is that the operations do not proceed prior to, um, being heard by the board. Um, and um, so we're flexible in that, but I guess I would, uh, refer back to Counsel Romero to, um, keep that in mind. And we don't, you know, our interests are not to have his client, um, mobilize and then have to demobilize. So I think our, all our interests are in, in alignment there. Um, our understanding is that there's currently an issue with his, uh, ability to operate there on relative to, um, the zoning that's permissible at the location and that that's a barrier to his operations at the county level. So to the extent that that's incorrect at this point, I would ask Counsel Romero just to advise us. So we're better informed about, um, what can happen in August and September. So I'll just say that. And then also, in terms of, uh, Counsel Solaris's question as to retaining counsel, the petitioners are, um, greatly interested in proceeding, uh, pro se, uh, if we cannot retain counsel in a timely way. Um, there, and, uh, appreciate the board's support of that approach. Um, so you know, that, that's kind of an unknown to us right at this moment in terms of who might be available, um, and when, and whether they'd be able to represent us in, in a matter that's within the next two months. So, um, I do understand from the last call, and forgive me if this is not correct, but I understand that there's, um, we have standing or potential standing under constitutional law and, uh, due process under the Fourteenth Amendment. So I am not a constitutional lawyer. Um, and, um, if, I guess, if the board feels like, uh, we do need counsel to, to, uh, argue under constitutional law, our rights to have a public hearing pursuant, uh, um, in, in, in this matter, then I would, I would ask the board to, to so advise us.
Thank you so much. And I saw quickly, uh, Ms. Solaria, I, I saw you raise your hand and I wanna give you the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and not, um, and we'll give, um, of course, the department's counsel at, at the floor as well. I just wanted to clarify my earlier mention of, of the petitioners obtaining counsel. There was mention of that in the fi- the joint filing. So that's the only reason I brought it up. I think the board made clear in its last meeting that that is not an expectation or a requirement. So I did want to clarify that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Of course, Ms. Solaria. Thanks for that clarification. And, um, and And um, and before we go to the department, uh, I wanted to, to make sure I see uh, Ms. Wheeler on, and I think I saw Ms. Pompan as well, and just wanted to make sure you didn't, uh, to give you a opportunity if you wanted to um, uh, talk to the board. So, all right.
No, I'm okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Sherry Popham here. I defer to Kimla, and uh, I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pompan. All right. So, with that, um, Ms., Ms. Katz, uh, thank you for joining us again on this other item. So, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, I, I actually have very little to say, except that I do have um, uh, Mr. V Hill's schedule, so if we are start, or we're talking about scheduling, I can at least relay his availability, but otherwise, um, I'm just here to kind of facilitate um, that on, on behalf of the department and uh, just help the board move things along here.
Thank you, Ms. Katz. Appreciate that. And so I, I look to, yes, Ms. Solaria.
Uh, not to preempt board member questions, but uh, with Pam's help, we do have windows of Ms. Orth's a- availability, so when the board is ready, I can go ahead and offer those, and we can flip them around.
Thank you so much, Ms. Solaria, and I, and I see some head nods. Yes, uh, Vice Chair Trujillo Davis?
Um, thank you. I just wanna make sure I understand the issue uh, completely here. So, the previous meeting, we discussed delaying the hearing, and that was one of the recommendations made, but I, I remember correctly, at the time, all the parties seemed like they wanted to go ahead and move forward with the scheduled date, and if Ms. Orth said she can, um, if she feels that she can catch up with all the information by the already scheduled date, I, I guess at this time, I don't understand why we would need to push it out any further. I, I'm not opposed to it. I just don't really, not really sure why we'd need to.
That, of course, Ms. Solaria.
Thank you, um, Chair. The, the reason why I'm said, that we're leaning towards continuing the date is that there was a joint motion to vacate, which was slightly filed by the parties, and I do fear since Mr. V Hill isn't here this morning, that he has proceeded under the assumption that we, today we would be setting a new date, so the posture has changed a little since the last meeting, and um, the, the parties have agreed to go ahead and just select a new date. Um, Ms. Orth kind of just suas ponte offered that she would be available on that original date. Um, but since, but she was not aware at the time that the parties had filed to go ahead and vacate that original date.
Thank you very much for that clarification.
Thank you, Ms. Solaria. Um, and thanks for that question. Thank you, uh, Vice Chair Trujillo Davis. Um, w- with that, um, I just wanna maybe hear from um, my fellow board members, uh, your additional thoughts given some of the discussion. One about the hearing officer, and then also um, potential dates for a new hearing, uh, date. Yes, Member Garcia?
Since we already have a scheduled uh, meeting date of August twenty-six, and as I recall, uh, we had previously allowed for two days, not expecting it to take two days, um, that we could sort of do the same thing we did for September. If there's nothing else on the schedule for the for August twenty-six, maybe we could try for the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth?
Um, I, I have a conflict uh, on those uh, uh, those dates, but it, it could go forward if, if without me, but yes, Ms. Solaria.
I, that's, that is not one of the dates that Ms. Orth has available, so that would be an issue. Um.
So, could we, oh, yes, um, Ms., Ms. Katz?
Thank you. I'm sorry to, um, but, but I, I believe we might, I, I don't know if we need to note it, renotice, um, in which case we need at least thirty days.
Thank you, Ms. Katz. That is an additional few about having the notice window. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Katz.
And Madam Chair, I can go ahead if um, you prefer for the dates that we have so far from Ms. Orth.
Yeah, yeah, that would be, that would be great to get that in additional information, and just kinda looking to our board, i- is, is that okay if we proceed there just to st- continue the conversation and facilitate that? Yeah, okay. Yes, Ms. Solaria?
Yes, the, um, so she's available September ninth through the nineteenth, October seventeen, seventeenth through twentieth, October twenty-fourth through thirty-first, and all of November so far, so the closest window would be September ninth through nineteenth window. Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Solaria. Does, th- that fit with um, um, some dates that might fit with our, our, our schedules? It looks like that might work too, and we were looking again, remind me, two days? Is that what we were looking at? Okay. Do any of the board members have any preference on those, or, you know, on those timeframes? Yes, Member Honker?
Yeah, I have a conflict the twelfth and thirteenth of September, so I would not be able to attend those dates. But uh, I think the rest of that window, um, I could.
Thank you, Member Honker. And with that, I'm just gonna throw this out there. How does September fifteenth and sixteenth look for folks? Nope. Oka- okay, Member Garcia. Um, what other dates work for your schedule, Member Garcia, since you're?
Clear the week of the fifth. So.
Yes, Ms. Solaria.
Uh, Madam Chair, it might be more expedient to ask the parties if what works in that window first, and then, and again, to remind the board that your participation is welcome, that, but if a hearing officer is appointed, we do not need a quorum for this to proceed. So, if the parties have anything to mention about the ninth through nineteenth window, or if we need to move on from that window because it's not gonna work, um, that would be the time.
Thank you, Ms. Solaria. So, I'm looking to um, the legal counsels, Ms., Ms. Katz. What do you, wh- what does Mr. V Hill's schedule look like?
So, that span is, uh, that date span from the ninth to the nineteenth, he's got a lot of, um, he's, he's out the ninth, the twelfth, and the fifteenth through the sixteenth, so the two-day block that he has, it looks like would be the thirteenth and the fourteenth. Cause that spans a week, that spans two weekends, that date range, so, um, so yeah, the thirteenth and the fourteenth is the only thing he has available in that timeframe.
Okay, and Mr. uh, Romero, what is?
Yeah, hi, hi, Madam Chair. Yes, I, um, the thirteenth and fourteenth are clear, as well as the other dates that you, uh, that have been proposed for that particular timeframe of the ninth through the nineteenth. Um, if, if the thirteenth and the fourteenth are the dates that uh, Mr. V Hill's available, why, that would certainly work, uh, work for us.
Great, wonderful. Thanks, Mr. Romero, and, and uh, Kim. Uh, what, what does that timeframe look like for you on the thirteenth and fourteenth of September?
Um, that works for me, um, yeah, and it works for Ms. Popham as well.
Thank you so much. So, and, and just double checking, and that would also, it looks like it works for the parties as well as Ms. Orth, if she is the hearing officer, not to be presumptuous. But, okay.
And I'll, I'll ask Pam to double, the dates you sent me were her availability. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Um, she also did say, if we needed the twentieth, she could be available, if it in fact did go two days, so she could be available nineteenth and twentieth.
Okay, but the ninth to the nineteenth, she was free, so that's, I think we're falling with it. Great. Thank you, Pam.
That's correct.
Um, so it looks like the states, Madam Chair, will work for the parties and the hearing officer um, for this to go forward.
Thank you, Ms. Solaria, and I know members of the board, we had a little bit of conflict um, with our schedules, but it, we, if we do have a hearing officer, uh, we could have, um, you know, review the hearing officer's report. All right, so with that, and then again, discussion um, about type, hybrid, in person? What are the thoughts of, of, um, yes, Vice Chair Trujillo Davis?
I, I think at this point, we should just continue with the method previously proposed of a a hybrid that could potentially uh, be completely online. Oh, look at that kitty cat.
Thank you, Vice Chair Trujillo Davis. Yes, is that, is that, um, I'm looking at the board, um, also, uh, just trying to look at the parties. Does that seem amenable as well to the parties? Okay. All right, and so I'm looking to the members of the board, uh, what are your thoughts about maybe, I think we're at the point where we can maybe make a motion? Anyone wanna take a shot at it? Yes, Ms. Solaria.
Uh, Madam Chair, and just to, the motion would be for the appointment of Ms. Felicia Orth as a hearing officer, and to set this hearing for a new date of September thirteenth and fourteenth as needed.
I'll drop that as my motion.
Thank you, Member Bitzer, for your motion. Thank you for the second, Member Kate. And with that, and I don't see any further discussion, um, Ms. Jones, would you please do a roll call vote on Member Bitzer's motion? I will. Member Bitzer, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
And Member Kate?
Yes.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Thank you, Member Honker.
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo Davis?
Yes.
And Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Appreciate that, and thank you to all the parties, um, appearing um, on our special meeting today, and thank you so much, and hope everybody has a wonderful weekend. All right. Wonderful. So, with that, um, it looks like we're on agenda item number five, which is adjournment, and so that was a, a quick meeting.
Good job. Good job.
Thank you. The, yes, Member Honker.
I, I thought Pam might have an update on the possibility of the Farmington hearing on that other matter. So, if we could, if we could hear that before we adjourn?
Yes, I do have an update. I'm working with department members, and it looks like we will be able to use some portion of the San Juan Community College. Um, they're, they're, they're looking at a number of different options where we would be able to accommodate members of the public in addition to um, having sufficient room for a court reporter and the board and such, so uh, I'm fairly certain that's going to be the location, um, as I get more information about the actual place within that community college, I'll let everyone know. Thank you, Ms. Jones.
So, actually, uh, just quick, quick follow-up there. Does anybody know what kind of public interest it's gonna generate? Is it a little or a lot? Does anybody have a feel for that?
I see Ms., Ms. Katz, um, yes, do you have a, um, a response to Member Kate's?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, um, Member Kate's, I believe there will be there'll be a lot of public interest. We already have, um, so many groups that are, have already uh, they're a coalition that have submitted comments to the department on the draft rule, and we know that the facility tends to draw a lot of um, interest, and just by virtue of that, I do think there will be a lot of public interest. Um, now, as I said at the meeting last week, the rule is fairly straightforward, and the statute itself already sets forth the mission standard, but there, there's definitely going to be, um, to be a lot of uh, public interest and participation, so we wanna make sure that we can accommodate that.
Yeah, yeah. You know, um, you, you mentioned there, there, it, you say there's a coalition, or there's coalitions plural? Just, just wondering.
Sorry, I didn't quite hear that, Member Kate's. Can you repeat?
Well, you, 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 you said that, um, you said there was a coalition, I think, or there are coalitions, was it plural? And I'm just wondering, um, maybe we're getting ahead of ourselves here, but um, which, which coalition or coalitions are um, likely to weigh in a significant way on this?
There are, um, there's a coalition of um, of environmental nonprofit groups that are very interested, um, and, and the, in the, s- in certain provisions, um, mainly having to do with the timeframe, uh, for the com- the averaging timeframe for compliance, and so there's, so they, that's the main um, interest, and then, of course, um, the, then there's also actually a lot of um, stakeholders in the um, San Juan Generating Station are also major, uh, major interest, um, including Navajo Nation, and um, so yeah, there's, there's quite a, there's a large number of, of interests in this on many different um, sides, so to speak.
Yes. Right, okay. All right, yeah, I was just, uh, just wondering. All right, thanks for that.
Thank you, Ms., Ms. Katz. Uh, yes, Member Honker.
And, and the dates we were looking at were uh, October twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, right? I see not, so. Okay, I just wanna make sure I have those right on my calendar. Thanks.
In other words, September and October, you all will be very busy.
Yes, a- and thank you, um, Member Kate's for your question. Um, that was good, uh, a goo- a great question, and, and thank you, Ms. Jones, for updating us on the venue and some of the arrangements. Appreciate that, and of course, Member Honker, thanks for asking the question. Is there any other questions? Hmm, if not, yes, Member Honker?
Well, hearing none, I will move we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Member Honker, for your motion, and Member Bitzer, for your second. Uh, I don't see any further discussion. Ms. Jones, would you please do a roll call vote? Member Bitzer, how do you vote on adjournment?
I vote yes.
And Member Kate?
Yes.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Honker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo Davis?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn passes. Thank you, Ms. Jones, and thank you, uh, fellow board members for joining us on a af- Friday afternoon, and have a wonderful weekend, and stay safe out there, too.
Bye, have a good weekend.
Yes, have a great weekend, everybody.
Bye, have a good.